Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of February 25th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter is absent. Councilmember Petron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda tonight, approval of the City Council Study Session Minutes of January 7th, 2020, City Council Conference Minutes of January 14th, 2020, City Council Finance Committee Minutes of January 16th, 2020, and City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of February 11th, 2020. I need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Item four, a proclamation proclaiming the, sorry, my text is off. It's the month of March as Women's History Month, and it's proclamation number 1920-28. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the proclamation passes unanimously.
A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of March 2020 as Women's History Month in the City of Norman. Whereas, since its inception as Women's History Week in 1981, Women's History Month recognizes, honors, and celebrates the achievements of American women. And whereas, 2020's national theme for Women's History Month, Valiant Women of the Vote, recognizes the centennial of the 19th Amendment and honors the brave women who fought to win suffrage rights for women, as well as women who continue to fight for the voting rights of others. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement. And whereas, the influence and accomplishments of women demonstrating leadership and professionalism in our community have contributed to all aspects of life, including the arts, education, medicine, business, government, and religion, and have continued to help make Norman a safe, thriving, and vibrant community. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Women's History Month in the City of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the contributions and accomplishments of women in our community. I'd like to invite Sandy Behan Doris from the League of Women Voters to the podium to accept the proclamation and to say a few words.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to invite two other members of the League of Women Voters to come up. My name is Doris Cupfer. I am the co-chair of the Norman League of Women Voters. I'd like to introduce Amanda Marcott Thunkel. She is our webmaster and member of the board, and Lois Hilbert, who is a past president, current secretary, and 50-year-plus member of the League of Women Voters, and she is celebrating tonight her 93rd birthday. The League is extremely honored to accept this proclamation for Women's History Month, especially since we are celebrating our 100th anniversary of our founding. As the mayor mentioned, it is also the 100th year of the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. It is not a coincidence that we are both celebrating our centennial. As at the end of the 75-year struggle for women's suffrage, those members of a suffrage group decided that it was important to found an organization which would serve women by educating them and assisting them in their task of becoming voters. So was founded the League of Women Voters. We now serve men as well as women, all citizens over the age of 18. We were founded as a nonpartisan but political organization, and we influence public policy by both education and advocacy, and we urge active participation in government at all levels. That being said, I would like to say for the League of Women Voters that we're extremely honored to be considered for this recognition tonight. Thank you.
And may I take a moment and thank the League of Women Voters for always hosting a wonderful forum with every city council election. It is the most professional one that we have, and it is very much appreciated. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Item five is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 41, with the exception of item 29.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items six through 41, with the exception of item 29, on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been to place items six through 41 on the Consent Docket, with the exception of item 29 passes unanimously.
Item six, Mayor's Appointments of Rod Hall, DVM, to the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee, and Kenny Orr to the Public Safety Oversight Committee for Ward Eight. Item seven, Submission of the Finance Investment Report as of January 31st, 2020. Eight, Submission of the Monthly Departmental Report for the month of January 2020. Item nine, Bid for the Installation of Pavement Markings for the Traffic Control Division. Item 10, Bid Contract and Bonds with Wind Construction Company Incorporated for the Water Reclamation Facility Waste Sledge Blower Replacement Project, authorizing the Utilities Director to purchase materials on behalf of the contractor and budget appropriation from the Water Reclamation Fund balance. The following 18 items are Acceptance of Permanent and Temporary Easements for the Legacy Trail Multimodal Path Extension. Item 11, Easement Donation by the University of Oklahoma. Item 12, Temporary Easement from Theo's Marketplace in the amount of $663.85. Item 13, Easement from Fowler Holding Company in the amount of $4,941.98. Item 14, Temporary Easement donated by Fowler Holding Company. Item 15, Temporary Easement from Fowler Holding Company in the amount of $487.80. Item 16, Easement from Fowler Holding Company in the amount of $3,599. Item 17, Temporary Easement from Fowler Holding Company in the amount of $109.07. Item 18, Easement from Fowler Holding Company in the amount of $4,185.82. Item 19, Temporary Easement 1920-47 from Fowler Holding Company in the amount of $299.24. Item 20, Easement 1920-48 from 36 North LLC in the amount of $1,152.22. Item 21, Easement 1920-49 from 36 Northwest LLC in the amount of $2,487.92. Item 22, Easement 1920-50 from 36 Northwest LLC in the amount of $3,763.11. Items 23 through 28 are Permanent and Temporary Easements donated by O.G.N.E. Item 29 has been removed from the Consent Docket. Item 30, Amendment Number Two to the Contract with E&amp;E Lawn Care LLC for mowing, securing of structures, and removal of health nuisances and easement obstructions for the Code Compliance Division, extending the contract through March 31st, 2021. Item 31, Amendment Number One to the Contract with Givens Property Maintenance LLC for mowing, securing of structures, and the removal of health nuisances and easement obstructions for the Code Compliance Division through March 31st, 2021. Item 32, Change Order Number One to the Contract with H&amp;H Plumbing and Utilities Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $25,303.86 for a revised contract amount of $1,444,763.86, and extending the contract time by 30 calendar days to install a replacement water line to Reeves Park and to rectify quantities for the required opening, cut, crossing of Jenkins Avenue. Item 33, Amendment Number One to the Contract with Studio Architecture to provide additional design, bidding, construction administration, and as-built services for the sanitation truck wash, the sanitation container maintenance, and the household hazardous waste facilities. Item 34, Contract with Freeze &amp; Nichols Incorporated in the amount of $125,000 to provide the engineering design criteria and standard specifications and construction drawings updated, and city ordinance review and budget transfers between project accounts. Item 35, Contract with Cohen Group Engineering in an amount not to exceed $526,600 to provide engineering design services for the James Garner Avenue Widening Project from Acre Street to Duffy Street as part of the 2019 Bond Projects. Item 16, Contract with the Oklahoma Tax Commission for the Administration of Sales Tax and Use Tax. Item 37, Resolution Appropriating $7,042 from other revenue miscellaneous account received from Community Development Block Grant Funds to Public Transit Operations. Item 38, Resolution Appropriating $401,115 from the 2019 Transportation Bond Account to be used for the Porter and Acres Intersection Bond Project. Item 39, Resolution Accepting the Transfer of a Vehicle from the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority Doing Business As Embarc to be used for Public Transit Services, Agreeing to Maintain the Vehicle in Compliance with Federal Requirements and Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Execute Any Contracts and Request Approval of the Transfer from the Federal Transit Administration. Item 40, Resolution Authorizing Joint Petition Settlement of Workers' Compensation Commission Case of Darren Hyatt, Directing the Legal Department to File Settlement and Authorizing the Finance Director to Purchase Workers' Compensation Commission Judgment from the Risk Management Insurance Fund. Item 41, Resolution Authorizing Joint Petition Settlement of Workers' Compensation Commission Case of Christopher Bozeman, Directing the Legal Department to File Settlements and Directing the Finance Director to Purchase Workers' Compensation Judgment from the Risk Management Insurance Fund. I need a motion to approve or reject the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been approved. The Consent Docket passes unanimously.
We'll begin with item 29, removed from consent. Final plot for Cedarwood Edition, located at the northwest corner of Claussen Boulevard, Highway 77, and Highway 9. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the final plot.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a representative for the applicant?
Well, after he talks, I'll.
Okay.
Understand it's been removed from consent, so we're happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I removed this from consent. I don't have any additional questions. We talked about this at length in January of 2019, 18. Okay. And I have opposed this project vocally and publicly, and so I wanted it removed from consent, even though I realize this is an administrative detail. I will not be supporting this tonight, based on traffic congestion in that area, the proximity towards a waterway, gas tanks, and that sort of thing. The fact that we have an ongoing situation at Ann Brandon that's just south of there, and the safety in that intersection mostly is my concern. So, that's it.
For the record, if I may.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, I appreciate that, Councilmember. I understand your background on this. We would simply reaffirm, and for the record state, this is administrative in that this is a final plot approval. Staff report and all indications I've seen today have indicated that we met all regulations of the City of Norman, including all the engineering and design guidelines, and everything was approved and processed accordingly. So, we would respectfully request the approval tonight, as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Just gonna state that I don't disagree with some of the concerns Councilmember Wilson has expressed about, not the specific location for me, but this general area because of Highway 9 and Highway 77, Ann Brandon, a boulevard, and I think probably two or three years ago, I would have been much more apprehensive about this, but I know we've, I think we've got some solutions coming with that, and so I don't disagree with reasons why anybody would be opposed to this. I'm gonna support it and look forward to hearing more about the improvements that are expected to come to the state highway in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other comments or questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the item. Are there any public comments regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the final plot. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the final plot passes by a vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Wilson.
Item 42, Ordinance Granting Special Use for a Bar, Lounge, or Tavern, and Special Use for Live Entertainment Venue in C3 Intensive Commercial District for Property Located at 311 and 313 East Main Street. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
Yes, good evening. Gunner Joyce, attorney for Yvonne Dorman, is the owner of Red Brick Bar. Take you through this very quickly. This is currently located at 311 East Main Street. The idea here is to expand into the adjoining property 313 East Main Street, and special use for the bar as required under the current C3 zoning. This is the current zoning. Subject tract right here is 311. Right next to it's 313. Both currently zoned C3. No change requested. And, excuse me, same thing with the land use. Currently commercial, and again, no change. This is the aerial, and this is a street view. The only reason the special use is on the current building at 311 is that it was prior to the special use ordinance, so it was a nonconforming use. This is just bringing it into the current zoning category. So, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
Um, are any changes to the interior, like completely removing the dividing wall, or just adding an entryway, or?
Just adding an entryway. There's an agreement between all the property owners and the bar, and has been approved by the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
Um, I just wanted to say that I'm very familiar with this space that's empty currently that you're wanting to expand into. This is actually the storefront that my great-grandfather operated a storefront out of for 50-plus years. Shoes and saddles, leather crafting. And so, very familiar with it, and I've also booked a lot of shows at, well, formerly Bill &amp; D's Lounge. My dad grew up next door to Johnny Johnson, whose parents owned Bill &amp; D's, and it's been Red Brick Bar for eight, seven, almost seven years now. So, I'm excited to see an expansion of this existing local business into their next-door space. I think it'd be a great use of it, and would help contribute even more to the vibrant nightlife we see in downtown. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall?
So, the Red Brick Bar is in the heart of Ward Four in historic downtown Norman. So, I'm also excited that you have this opportunity to expand your business and your presence as part of downtown Norman, and my final comment is long live the Red Brick Bar.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay.
Make that historic, I think.
The neon beer sign, if you need a point of reference for the establishment we're talking about. Iconic on Main Street.
When I would book shows there sometimes, when we'd try to tell them where it was, we'd just say, "Just drive down Main Street and look for the neon beer sign. That's where you need to go."
Okay. We might have to add in a condition that that must stay for all time. Okay. Thank you so much. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been approved. The ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
First.
Second.
It's been first and second.
All votes to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item 43, Ordinance 1920-34, rezoning 13300 East Deer Creek Road from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD, Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening. I'm actually the applicant, so I'm representing myself. We are, I think I have a PowerPoint as well. Left click.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Tara Chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
And this is the property that we're looking to rezone. It is a 10-acre property, and most of the properties surrounding it are 10 acres as well. And that's why we're looking to buy it and rezone it. The reason we're wanting to rezone is to take care of our aging parents. I have a father who is 90% disabled from the military, and a mother who has a chronic illness, and I'm wanting them to live on our property and age independently, giving them their independence as long as possible, while living on our land until they pass. So, that's why we're looking to rezone, because with the current rezone, the current zoning, we can't have two homesteads. So, we couldn't really go with the, what was it, the zoning for medical hardship, because we were wanting a more permanent residence, not a trailer or mobile home on it. There's currently a mobile home on the property that we are gonna be moving into for a couple years while our home is being built, and then after that, my parents will be moving into it while their home is being built. And then it'll be moved off within 60 days of them entering into their home. So, that's kind of the plan, within five years, to have them on our property once we take ownership. We did take in two concern, the protest letters, and we updated the PUD. I worked closely with Anna Estar with Norman, and updated the PUD to hopefully make the protesters a little more in acceptance of it.
Can you give us a quick rundown of what you updated?
Yes. I added in a uses permitted section, and their, one of their main concerns was that the accessory dwelling unit would be rented, and we added into the PUD that, under the uses permitted, that that would not happen. So, even if we moved off the property, we could only rent to one family, not two families into both homes. Or even if we were to sell the property, we could only sell to one family, the whole acreage, which we don't ever plan on moving off the property, but things happen. So, we added that in, because that was one of their concerns, the surrounding homeowners. So, we did take that into account. Let's see. I think that was pretty much the only thing we added in, was the uses permitted section of the PUD. We wanted to maintain the respect of the current zoning, because that's really the reason that we were wanting to move out that way, because it was such a large acreage, spread out. So, we wanted to respect that, but at the same time, to take care of our parents. So, that's it. Any questions?
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Wilson.
It's hard to tell on this map that you've provided, and thank you for coming in and talking to us tonight, and also thank you for coming in and talking to us before you buy.
Yes.
Because it's, you know, these can be weird, but it looks like there's some sort of waterway on there?
There is a flood zone that's on there that's protected through the City of Norman. It's a 100-year flood zone. That's why we made sure to include the map. I think there's a closer view of it on here. Yeah, right there. So, we would no, in no way be manipulating, like, the flood zone or the drain off with where we're planning to build.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall?
Okay, I think you may have just mentioned this, but do you currently own the property?
No, I am representing the property. I sent in a letter. It's actually a family friend that owns the property. That's how we became to know of the property. And I sent in a letter, and he signed it and notarized it, that we were representing it before we buy it, because we didn't want to buy it and then not have the zoning. So...
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood all of that. And I know you addressed this a bit in some of your documents, but could you go over your timeline and what you're intending to build, and when you're intending to build it?
I actually have pictures of kind of what I'm looking to build, and what my parents are looking to build. So, this first one is kind of the main home that I'm, me and my husband are looking to build. It would look something like this. And then the accessory dwelling unit would be, oh, something like this, like a little shop home. Those aren't exact. Those are pictures we added in, just for reference.
Okay, so, do you intend to build your, the main dwelling?
The main home first.
And you anticipate that taking up to four years?
We, our goal is to have both dwellings built, and the mobile home that's on there currently done within the five years after taking over the property.
So, are you building the accessory building concurrently with the main residence?
So, our main residence would be built first, and then my parents would move into the mobile home that's on the property now. When we, when we buy the property, there's already a mobile home on it. So, we were gonna live in that while our house is being built, and then our parents would move into the mobile home while their house is being built, and then the mobile home would be moved off within the five.
Okay, and so, you refer to this illustration as a shop home?
Mm-hmm.
And I've actually heard of that, but could you explain a little bit what a shop home is?
So, it's, it's kind of like just a shop with the interior built like a home. Some people call them shop dominiums, condominiums. They can be real small, or you can build them even larger with the size of the shop.
Okay, so this is kind of, I think, where I get a little bit confused, because I think from your timeline, you were projecting year one through four would be the timeline for building the main home.
One to two years.
Oh, one to two years.
And then from there, my parents would be building.
Okay, so then year three is when your parents would be moved onto the property?
Yeah.
Okay. And then they would live in the current manufactured home for at least a year?
While their house is being built.
You were, you were building that. So, then you also talked about that you were going to construct a 2,400-square-foot garage shop. Is that different than the shop?
That's just a shop, yeah.
Okay.
That's just like a garage.
Okay, so, it's, that's gonna take about five years total, or?
That was our first plan, was to build our shop so that we could park into the shop, because with the current mobile home, there's no garage. So, we like having a garage. So, we're gonna build the shop first, build our home, then the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. So, you're building three separate structures?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I was curious, too, in the staff report where it said that since the Planning Commission meeting, that you had revised your document, and I saw that we had access to the original PUD document, and then the revised one. So, the significant change was just making sure about the rental piece?
Yeah, that was a big concern with the protesters that came to the Planning Commission meeting, and I wanted to make sure they were more comfortable with our PUD document, because I definitely don't want to be making anyone around us angry. So, I wanted them to be more comfortable with our document and with what we had planned to do, and feel, make them feel more secure that if we were to sell it, it would not be rented as soon And feel, make them feel more secure, that if we were to sell it, that it would not be rented as two separate properties.
So I noticed from the protest map that you have a pretty significant protest from the neighbors, and?
There was a homeowners agents, like a homeowners association.
So, you know, that always gets my attention.
Yeah.
You have such a significant percentage of protest, which I believe is sixty-two point two percent. So after you revised your PUD document, did you have an opportunity to meet with the homeowners or the neighborhood?
I've talked to, after the planning commission, I've only talked to one of the ones, and that was the ones directly to the east of our property. And they were happy with the PUD changes.
So?
But they're the only ones that I talked to right after.
Okay, so, we can probably only assume at this point, since that didn't take place, that they may or may not?
Yeah, there are, I think, three of them here tonight.
Okay, well, we'll get to hear from them.
Yeah.
So, then the, a couple of other things that caught my attention. So how many, this is a ten acre parcel, was that correct? And how many acres are actually in the flood plain or the flood zone?
The back five is what I would guess.
Okay, so half is in the flood zone. And then there was a reference to green space, and this may actually be a plan, for the, our planner, and not, I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but I was just curious, because it's specified in your document that, I'm assuming that the entire ten acres are included in the PUD? And then half of the, half of it are, is in the flood plain? And then it also designated green space, that the ten to fifteen percent of the gross acres designated, had to be designated as green space. So is that beyond the flood plain, or is that?
That part, I am not sure of.
Okay, is, maybe for, yeah. Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if you could answer that, so.
I don't know about that.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Absolutely.
Do you want me to restate that, or?
So, in the PUD requirements for writing a PUD, it specifically states that you have to have ten to fifteen percent open space, and so, I believe in working with Anna East, that's where they came up with the open space requirement, is to just outline what was in the zoning ordinance for a PUD.
Okay, so that would be one to one and a half acres, I guess, then, that would be the green space. So, is that over and above the flood plain? That's the part I wasn't sure about. So if you have ha, if you have five acres in the flood plain, is the one to one and a half acres, is that above that, beyond what's in the flood plain as the green space?
I think it would be, it would be up to them, honestly. So the flood plain area is on the, what would be the southeast corner of the property. But again, that's a requirement for the PUD in the zoning ordinance. And so, you know, realistically, I don't see them developing this to where there would be a question of whether or not they would have ten to fifteen percent open space.
Okay.
We were just trying to follow along with what the PUD requirements are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Petron.
My first question was, I didn't quite understand what the problem was with the medical exemption that we have. Why, why wasn't that enough to be able to move your parents on site?
Well, they would have, at some point, I foresee my father having issues climbing up into a mobile home. And this would be. We were looking for something more permanent on the residence. Because I, I want them to be happy with what they're living in, and they wouldn't be happy living in that. And I believe the medical hardship is only temporary, it's not a permanent thing. Like, it's only for a few years at a time, from what Anna East had told me.
Can we get clarification on that, please?
Medical hardship is good for a three-year period, and then it can be renewed after that three, three-year period. So they have to go to Board of Adjustment every three years for a request. There's notification for property owners, no different than they notify for zoning.
Is there ever an instance where it would not be renewed?
Did you say your father's full, fully disabled?
Ninety percent.
So in that situation, would we be granting a medical hardship for ninety percent disability?
There's a doctor's note that's required, but I mean, and I don't want to speak for Board of Adjustment, but that would be up to them to make the decision for medical hardship.
Okay. So even if you were able to get a medical hardship and continue to have that until, that wouldn't be sufficient for what you're trying to do?
I'm, I'm trying to keep with what my parents want, and I don't think that that's something they want to do, is live in a, a mobile home.
This parcel, does the HOA, or do we have, is this under the ten acre covenant restriction, where it cannot be divided?
Yes.
Okay. It's on a BUD, it's ten acres, yeah.
This property's already been subdivided, it's part of Rural Certificate of Survey, North Fork Estates, so council's already approved the subdivision of property for this. That's why you're only dealing with zoning tonight.
Subdivision.
Right.
Okay. I think that's all the questions that I have.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Jane, would you mind just describing briefly what exactly the medical hardship allows to be constructed? Is it just a mobile home on wheels, or could it be a more prefab building that's level with the ground type of situation?
I believe it specifically says, to permit a mobile home to serve as a temporary second dwelling to relieve medical hardship.
Mobile home, is that defined as?
It's a manufactured home, yeah, it's wheels, you have to get, they would have to pull it in, and it would have to meet the current standards for building permits. I mean, the wheels would be off, skirting would be required, anchoring, so on and so forth.
That's what I was, yeah, trying to get, that is, is it required to be a mobile home, like a trailer on wheels, or can it be just a prefabricated house?
It, it would need to be the mobile home.
It can be removed later, but.
So if you're talking about a prefabricated home, the current building code with the city of Norman does not allow the prefabricated homes. So we allow the manufactured homes that are pulled in on the wheels, and then they're tied down, and, you know, wheels are removed and everything. But that was the whole idea of the medical hardship, was that it would be a mobile home that could be removed.
Okay, thank you, Jane. So I know there's two current structures on the property, or from what I can tell, in the drawing you made and on Google Earth currently, unless they've been removed recently.
There's one mobile home, and then there's like a covered parking. There's just like a metal covered parking, it's not really a structure.
Large barn or shed, and then a smaller type, so covered parking?
Yeah.
Uh, are both of those going to be removed? Okay. And the driveway currently appears to be gravel, is that going to be paved with concrete?
I would love for it to be paved at some point.
Or asphalt, or is it planned to be paved?
I would hope so, yeah.
As part of this PUD.
It'd probably be gravel for a while, but I would hope that eventually it'd be paved.
Okay. I would note too, that that creek is, I don't want to say the wrong name of it, because I know there's several out there, but it does feed directly into the lake, it appears to me on here, so. That is definitely a concern I would have as well, so thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Bierman.
This might be a question for Jane. Does, is there anything in the PUD that prevents the ADU? Because, okay, I'm going to preface this for the applicant. A PUD is permanent. It is a permanent change to that parcel. One of the reasons why we like the medical hardship exemption is it because it allows some flexibility in our zoning for temporary uses that don't exist into perpetuity. So when I ask this question, I just want to make sure that you know that I'm not necessarily thinking about just you as the property owner, but about any subsequent property owner that comes after you, because this is a permanent change. So I just wanted to make that clear before I asked my question. Sorry, Jane, I didn't mean for you to sit down. I do have a question for you. Is there anything in the PUD document that prevents this ADU from being rented out on a short-term basis?
No, in the PUD document, and that's one of the things that they had amended between Planning Commission and City Council, so it says, shall not be rented long-term as a separate dwelling unit by the property owner, but that also includes that, I mean, there's no short-term rentals, there's no long-term rentals on this, in this PUD.
Okay, so it doesn't prevent it? Short-term, so like an Airbnb, which would not be considered a long-term?
That would be, I guess, depending on how things move forward with short-term rentals.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so, because to me, this is really the big question for us as policymakers, is a permanent change versus a temporary change. I recognize that the temporary change might not be exactly what you want, but we also have to look at the long-term implications of a policy like this, and the precedent that it might set for future applicants to come in. We have a long and troublesome history of people coming and standing up there and saying, "Well, you did it like this last year, or two years ago, why can't you do it in this case?" And so, to me, that's really where my concern lies, and kind of trying to find a way to split the baby, and say, "Well, this might not be exactly what you want," but I don't necessarily know that I can go so far as to make a permanent change in a part of the city that we are trying very, very hard to limit development in. So, that's really where I struggle. I do appreciate you making some changes based on, based on the protest letters and the people who showed up. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that's kind of where I'm struggling with this, because just because you might not have any intent of doing things like renting it out on a short-term basis. We just don't know who's going to come after you and do the same thing. And because of what you're looking to do, there really is no option for a spud, like a special PUD, that kind of leaves with you, because the house is going to be there permanently. So the medical hardship kind of takes the place of that as a short-term solution. So, that's kind of what I'm spinning around in my head right now, so just wanted to make sure you knew.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
Sean, did I hear you correctly, Mr. O'Leary, I'm sorry? That you said this has already been subdivided, but they're all ten acres, they're, are you saying, I'm, I'm a little bit lost in that?
I cannot tell you, Mr. Sturts may know, I don't know about acreage, but I know that the, this parcel has already been subdivided by, by use of a certificate of survey called North Fork Estates. That's why you're not seeing a subdivision case tonight or an application. You're only dealing with the zoning of a previously subdivided parcel. That subdivision process also addressed the flood plain boundaries, that's why you're seeing that on the drawing. So all of those public improvement and, and water resource issues were addressed some time ago by council's approval of this parcel subdivision.
So then, am I, am I understanding correctly that, that it adheres to the one to ten rule currently?
Yes, it, it adhered then, and council approved it as, as part of a larger series of parcels.
And it's zoned agricultural?
That's correct.
Right now? Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but?
Tara.
Tara. Tell me, so, some of the reasons why we have these rules in place, you may know, they've probably, staff probably briefed you, is that we're trying to keep the density at bay. We're trying to keep, you know, the, the burden on our waterways low, especially anything for me personally. East of forty-eighth is where my line is, because that conforms generally with our land use plan. So, I'm, I need to hear from you, the reason why you should be able to do it over other applicants, because that's where we're going to get sticky, is if you do it, then this person wants to do it, and that person, you know what I'm saying? We have, we have these rules in place for a reason. And I try to balance those in my mind with property rights, so I kind of want to hear that from you.
Well, I know, I, for me and my husband, we're looking for somewhere to build our forever home. And we, that is surrounded by friends of ours. The current owner lives next door, he's completely okay with what we're trying to do. I'm just trying to take care of my parents, and I mean, I can find, I, I like that area. It would make, it's closer to my other side of my family, it's just the area I wanted to be in, but?
So you like the area, and you like the community?
I do. I like the people around me, and they're people that I know, and I'm comfortable with, and that could help.
Okay, well, thank you for your input.
Thank you, councilmember. We have a comment from our city attorney, Catherine Walker.
I just wanted to clarify the short-term rental question. In this PUD, they're not adopting all of the A two uses, or any large category of uses that would update with updates to the zoning ordinance. It's just a limited adoption of, of specific uses. So as that zoning ordinance gets updated to add short-term rentals, that doesn't mean that this PUD will also be amended automatically to allow for short, short-term rentals. It will be limited to only the uses outlined within the document.
Thank you. I have a question, with a shop home, what would happen if you wanted to turn it into a shop? I mean, is that why you went with a shop home model?
No, that's just what my parents like.
Okay.
That was the house that they had kind of picked out, that they wanted to live in. And it's kind of level with the ground, so it's well-terre accessible if we ever go that route. I'm a nurse, and I am trying to do what's best for them, and be able to take care of them until, and give them their independence while they're aging. And that's just something we looked at, because it is flat with the ground. And we'd be able to make the doorways wide, as wide as we want. With the shop home, it's easier to manipulate the structure than with a brick home, like if we needed to widen doorways, or widen a wall.
Gotcha. We, as a council, have talked a lot about creating visitable homes, accessible homes, and since this change would stay with the property, it would seem that we're just creating a ten acre option with a live-in that perhaps someday you could move into, and your children could move into your home.
And that's kind of what we were thinking, like when my parents passed, it could be something my son could live in while he's going to college, or a family member in a hard time could come in. It'd be a guest home, once my parents were gone.
And so the main issue with this, with planning, was it added a kitchen, correct? Was that, is that the distinguishing factor, because we do allow, like?
We allow guest homes, I can answer. We allow guest homes out there, in, in the, the big, I think there might be a size situation, and you can't have a stove.
That's what I heard was the difference, okay.
So with a guest home, there's no cooking facilities, and it can't be lived in all the time. So there's two qualifiers for a guest home.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Petron.
If you don't mind me asking, where, where do your parents live now?
They live in Nowala.
Okay, and so they, while you're shopping for land, and you're thinking, you, you want to custom build a home, it, but it's going to be maybe three years before they would need to be here?
It could be, I mean, technically, if it could happen faster, I would make it happen faster. But I foresee it not being able to happen as quick as I wanted it to.
Okay. So, I, I would say that, Ms. Hudson, would you? In visiting with our applicant here, and she's shopping for land, is there anything in our code that we can, that would be able to accommodate this need? Like two parcels next to one another, that are five acre parcels? Or how would she, how could she meet her goal here without disrupting the whole code?
She would need two tracts, two separate tracts of land that are adjacent to one another, that would be, you know, sometimes there's grandfather lots, you know, five acre lots. Far and few between to find two right together, though, so.
Or a twenty acre lot that she subdivided, that she divided?
And she would have to go through the certificate of survey process, right?
Right, but I, in your experience as an expert, as a planner here, would it be easier to do that than it would be to get a PUD, to effectuate her goal here? Because basically, this is two freestanding homes on one lot. I mean, that's what we're talking about.
I, I'm not familiar with the cost of doing a certificate of survey, so I don't, I, I can't speak to that.
No, I'm saying, would it be easier with the city's standpoint for us to go ahead and approve a twenty acre lot to become two ten acre lots?
Right.
If you're wanting to live on a lot of land?
Right, and you, you wouldn't have to change it? Right, and you wouldn't have to change the zoning, it would stay A2 for each tract?
So there are ways that she can be living in close proximity to her parents if she's wanting to live on a large acreage. Okay. I, this one troubles me a little bit, because, well, not just for a little bit, but kind of a lot, for what Councilmember Beerman has spoken about, and because, while we haven't heard from your neighbors yet, the protests here, I can only imagine that they want to live out in the country to have that elbow room, and to be one house on 10 acres. And, so this one, it's, it bothers me a little bit, but I wanted to make sure that it, there would be a way for you to do this. And it sounds to me like you have time, because your parents wouldn't be moving right in. So we, you haven't spent any money on this land, it's not yours. So, I would like to hear from the neighbors, but I'm glad that you haven't closed, and then come before us, and then I'm really over a barrel trying to figure this out, and.
It definitely was not an easy process.
I know, but I, that's why, it's not supposed to be. It's supposed to be hard, because of the reasons that Councilmember Wilson spoke to, when she said, why should I, we approve yours, when all of these other people, for many, many years, have come forward that might want to do this, and then people in the future, once they see that you've done it, and all of your neighbors are wanting to live out in the country in a serene elbow-room space. Pretty soon, you have just a major housing development, if everybody keeps doing that. So, I, I don't know, I'd like to hear from the neighbors, because I think that they need to tell us, but I also think it's fair that you hear what we're thinking. And I'm very sensitive to your situation, I really am. I want to make sure that we have a way that we can counsel you through that.
It was honestly, it was a tough decision to even go through this process, because it was kind of a burden, but I thought it would be worth it because of the surrounding people that we were going to be around, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. And before we go to public comment, we have another comment from Councilmember Holman.
Just want to state that I emphasize, or empathize with you as well about this. I know, standing in front of this council and not hiring a big attorney to come represent for you, and do a big presentation is very difficult. But some of the same concerns, you know, I can, I can echo about. It may not seem like a big deal, this is only one small, you know, unit, and this is way out. It's 19 miles from City Hall, it's way out there. But there have been concerns for years about if we allow some more density out there than what's currently allowed, that there are developers that would like to build a urban subdivision neighborhood, and strip malls, and all sorts of stuff out there, as far as we could let them, you know, resorts around the lake, and all sorts of stuff like that, lots of concrete. And so we have to be very careful about how much past 48th Avenue we allow. I, and I was looking for some, I guess, further clarification about the one-house, one dwelling unit per 10 acres, because that was a real sticking point to me, is so, the way I'm understanding is, is it's already in a subdivision, and if we did grant it, it would not impact the one-house per 10-acre? Somebody else wouldn't be able to come in and say, well, you let them build two on one lot? Because I've always viewed it as, one-house per 10-acre means if there's more than one house on a lot, that's more than one.
You've got a platting issue here, and a zoning issue here. It's already platted, 10-acre lots, that doesn't change with this. But it is different from what would normally be allowed under the A2 zoning, which would only allow one dwelling unit.
So we would be altering that, we would be setting an example of others? Okay, that's, that's exactly what I need to know. I would like to hear from residents, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing no other comments from council at this time, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
Good evening. I'm Mike Norris, I'm a property owner in the area. Have with me tonight the president of our homeowners association, Mr. Virgil Whedon, and another property owner, Mr. Bill Spears. I'm speaking to you as a representative, because I drew the short straw. But, let me first say that I want everybody to know that we applaud what this family is trying to do. I've been in that situation, these gentlemen have been in that situation, and we understand, and I think more people should be appreciated for what they try to do for their parents. And it, that's not the issue with us. It's a zoning issue with us, and, and that takes on maybe a personal nature, but we don't mean for it to be. All of us that have property out there, and you're right, it's still 62% majority of the homeowners that are against the rezoning. We all bought those properties on 10-acre lots to use them for agricultural purposes, anything from gardening to livestock, to pasture, and then just wanting to be on 10 acres. We all purchased them with that in mind, because that's what the A2 zoning is. And the rezoning, we think, is something that we all know, once you allow one, it's very easy to get variances after that, and they come rapidly, it seems. I'd like to address that, the North Fork comments. We're not aware of anything on this property being involved with that. There's a, a property just north and west of us that they've attempted to put in, that has been opposed by one of the adjoining property owners. That's the only one I'm aware of that might be something that's going to be a development that's being opposed. I'm not aware of this property being involved in that. We also are thinking that even with this PUD, that that's unnecessary. A second dwelling is unnecessary to go on these properties, that's why they're all zoned that way, that's why we all own the property that way. That there's other accommodations, we feel, that could be made for the, the parents as building one unit, one, one dwelling, to have a wing, or, or some accessibility for the parents that would allow them to be with family, and be cared for, as, of course, we'd all like to see them be, but without having a second dwelling on the property. The, the rental issue, I know it's been clarified by attorney, I thank you, but we've noticed that initially in the zoning planning commission, it said there would never be anything done to rent that property, it would never be rented out. In this application, it said to be no long-term rental. We are concerned that any alienation of that property, if the title is transferred, none of those promises, or none of that, that we, as we know it, would be binding on any, you know, subsequent owners about how they would use the, the second unit, the second property. And, and that concerns us, again, because of the rezoning. The four to six years planning period, concerned us somewhat in that nobody knows what's going to happen four to six years from now, and whether even a, a second dwelling would be feasible if anybody's condition deteriorates at any time. Might not even be feasible for a detached second dwelling to satisfy needs. We, I don't think anybody that's voiced a protest would oppose a one-dwelling building with access for parents separate, or even the medical hardship. We would understand that, especially since it's been clarified that it would have to be removed from the property after that hardship is, is over. So I don't think there would be an opposition to any of those alternatives that have been suggested tonight. We also have taken into consideration, some of us already, for members of our family, that we are, as you said, 19 miles from City Hall. We're also quite a ways from healthcare facilities and medical facilities, and ambulance and fire. It's quite a distance from us in some instances. The previous PUD that was approved in this area, as it was stated in the planning commission, that previous approval is anywhere from 18 to 20 miles from our area, depending on which house you choose to, to calculate the distance. It's on, basically 20 miles south of us, past Highway 9. So I don't consider that to be a PUD that's in our area that's been approved, and we're trying to preserve that area. We believe that 62% is obviously a majority, and when it comes to property rights and zoning, and, and things that we have bought and relied upon in the ownership of our property, that this is a case where the majority should be considered, and, and probably should majority rule. So, we, again, want to state that we applaud what these people, this couple is trying to do for parents, and we applaud the fact that they're trying to do it, but we just don't want the permanent zoning change that could affect all of our property rights and our property values, and the usage of our property later on, especially as, as it was suggested, if development starts, and concrete and houses start around us. We've lost our agricultural, outside-of-the-city atmosphere and culture, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Are there any other public comments regarding this item? Make sure you state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Maya Cobb, I live in Norman. I have not really a part of this, I just have a general question. So you guys keep talking about, like, on average, like if you approve one person, you have to approve another person. On average, like how many people come up to you guys, like personalized stories? Like wanting, like something like this to happen?
It's a good question. Ms. Hudson, do you have any numbers off the top of your head? A good enough question, that's not probably a ready, a ready figure.
You know, it seems we've had two of these. One is the most recent one, but it's been several years ago, but I believe we've, I think this will be the third one, that we've, we've presented for similar situation for multi-generational housing.
And where have those been, if you can recall?
So the one was, so this one, and then there's the one on 36th, south of Cedar Lane. And then the other one, I, I want to say the other one was up in, in North Norman somewhere, but closer into the, the core area, not core area, closer into the urban area. Yeah, it was still on 10 acres, or five, or something.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments regarding this item? Seeing none, final comments from council, Councilmember Wilson.
Well, I super appreciate you guys coming and trying to adhere to our zoning ordinances, and, and doing your homework so diligently, that's awesome, so I hope you don't feel beat up here. This actually has some bigger implications. So it's, like, I think somebody said earlier, not to you personally, or your family, it seems like y'all are doing the right things. And, and I, I just have very real concerns about making these zoning changes and the implications of precedents. I also have real concerns about the, the proximity to a floodplain, and the fact that we are struggling to keep our lake clean at this point. And to, the reason for this kind of density rules in our city is to maintain green space out there that works as a riparian zone for our lake. And so we really need to be careful how we structure these things. So the permanence of this is part of, is the problem, for me. That we can know, we can go, we're not going to go take that back after they're done with it. However, we do have a mechanism for that with the medical hardship. I know that's not the most beautiful housing option. But I worry about overloading our system, our septic's, you know, having too many septic systems on top of our watershed, and on top of near waterways. I went back and looked at, at why I voted the way I did on the last one that came to us. It was a very different situation. It was two five-acre, or a five-acre, it was already broken down, and, and it had the density options, if they just cut it in half. And they could do that, where they were zoned to do that. So I think that the precedence wasn't really set there. And this one actually would be a very significant change to our zoning that would impact my ward significantly, and I've been a huge advocate for maintaining our green space. And for that, I won't be supporting this tonight. I really wish you guys would be my constituents, but I won't be supporting it, and I thank you for your effort.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
I forgot what I was going to, it was a, I turned it on a while back.
We can circle back. Councilmember Holman.
Just want to echo some of the same comments of my colleague. I do appreciate you guys coming down here, I know this is difficult. And to answer the question of one of the audience members, in my seven years on council, I've seen quite a few individuals come to that podium that have had unique stories and reasons why they were here in front of us, asking for something. And some of them are very emotional, some of them would really want to approve it, but from a policy standpoint, we sometimes have to say no, even if we personally would like to say yes. And that's one of these situations for me. I love to have you guys as residents of Norman, and live in this area. I think, as mentioned by some of the residents, a one-house that has this, has a separate entrance, I'm not sure how that might work, but could be an option for you to, to be on this property, but allowing two units on this particular property, east of 48th Avenue, is something I, I would not feel comfortable approving at this time. So, again, thank you for coming down here. I'm unfortunately not going to be able to support this tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall.
I just wanted to also weigh in with, and agree with some of the comments that have already been made, so I won't go over those, and appreciate the effort that you've put into this, and the thought that you've put into this, and the wisdom of going through this process first, before you purchase the property, and I think how sensitive we all are to what it means to be a caregiver for aging parents. And I think, you know, there are some other options, and as we've mentioned, as policymakers, we really do have to look at the bigger picture of what we're allowing, and this is just such a fragile environment, and trying to protect our watershed, and all of those things that go along with it, as to why it was zoned this way in the first place. I'm also concerned about the density. You're not only adding a 2,000-square-foot house, but a 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, plus a shop for like almost 6,000 square feet of increased density on an area that, you know, we're trying to keep as low density as we possibly can. So, for me as well, it is a struggle, and it's really hard, because I know that this is an important step for your family, but I will not be able to support this project tonight either.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
Okay, so that was actually when I pushed my button, was when you were up earlier. And so, immediately what came to mind when you were standing there and asked the question was, there was a business that I really wanted to approve, just, I don't know, three or four meetings back, but they were also asking for a PUD. They wanted to have a exception, basically, to our Center City Form-Based Code. And while I really empathize with their business, and I understood that, you know, what they were trying to achieve, there's a lot of hours and planning, and, I mean, these are entire careers, educations, many, many years of schooling goes into zoning, and form-based codes, and all of that. So to make that exception opens a door to the next applicant coming in and saying, but you gave the exception to these people, give it to us now. And once you have that PUD in place with the land, then it's going to continue on, and on, and on. So, while it might not always be a house, or whatever we do here. I mean, it seems like there's a PUD before us every meeting now. Anyway, so, I feel much the same as everybody else has spoken. My heart goes out to you for the situation you're in, but at the same time, I'm so glad that you didn't already purchase it. You are, you do the steps you're taking, you have done this correctly. Come ask first, rather than make a huge investment. When, now our staff can counsel you on how, you know, you can achieve what you are trying to achieve here. And gratefully, you do have a little bit of time, since mom and dad aren't wanting to move in tomorrow. And you would still need to build your home, if you're wanting to, you know, build from scratch, so. I wish you the best of luck, and I really hope that this hasn't put you off to where you don't want to come up to the city, because I know that our staff will help you a lot to be able to walk you through the different steps on, if you do want to build, and all of those things, so. So, yeah, thanks for all of the time that you put into it, because I know that it does take a lot of time. And I just wish you and your family the best of luck. I'm not going to be voting for this today, but I feel like that there's going to be a project that you're able to complete. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. I'll throw in my two cents. First of all, I want to thank your whole family for your father's service, being the daughter of a veteran, I know that's the whole family that serves, so thank you for that and for your service as a nurse. I often speak about, one of the beautiful parts of Norman is that you can get a loft on Main Street or ten acres in Ward Five. And I love that we have those options. And because there is an alternative right now, actually multiple if you think about getting creative with designs of a main home, but also the option with the optional ramp, I want to see that utilized before we do a permanent change and possibly set a precedent that we can't undo for something that we are all wanting to protect. But thank you for your time, I won't belabor anything else. But with that, seeing no final comments, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion fails unanimously.
Item forty-four, ordinance nineteen twenty dash forty, amending Chapter Eight of the City Code to change the requirement of city council approval for all contracts exceeding twenty-five thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or check the ordinance on second reading, section by.
To adopt.
Second. I'd like to recognize our city attorney, Catherine Walker, to make a presentation.
It's going to be really brief. We talked back in October, I believe it was, in Finance Committee about this provision of our code, basically requires that we bring all contracts exceeding twenty-five thousand dollars to you all for approval. And we talked about changing that for efficiency and just to sort of modernize the amount. Way back when, I think this provision required everything over five thousand dollars. Then it was raised to twelve thousand five hundred and then twenty-five thousand, a number of years ago. We talked in that Finance Committee meeting about changing that amount to fifty thousand in part because that ties into the Competitive Bidding Act. And of course, this impacts other contracts, not just construction contracts, but the Competitive Bidding Act also requires a specific process for things that exceed fifty thousand dollars, and so that seemed like a reasonable place to set the bar. It was discussed by Finance Committee and support was expressed at that time and we were advised to send it out to the full council and get feedback, which we did a few weeks ago. And so, before you tonight, it's the actual code change to make all contracts above fifty thousand to come to council rather than above twenty-five thousand. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Patron.
It's been a little minute since we, I remember discussing it in October, but it seems like our, a lot's happened since then, but can you tell me, it's, would this also apply to purchases?
No, yes, purchases, contracts, anything like that between, over twenty-five thousand currently come to council and this would change that to fifty thousand.
So, if, if staff wanted like to add a work vehicle and it was, as long as it wasn't fifty thousand?
Correct.
Did they just go buy it?
Yes, and keep in mind, in order for us to do that, the money has to have been appropriated by council. So oftentimes, these would be things you all have already approved a budget for, it just saves time and is more efficient for us to be able to go and effectuate that purchase without coming back to council for approval after it's already been appropriated.
So, this would have, took place several years back, but I actually had, this is completely anecdotally speaking, this story was told to me this week, so while I was getting ready to come up here and I was thinking about this particular item, a friend of mine and, so, again, this wasn't recent, said that he had gone to a gas station or whatever and he was admiring this pretty new truck. And that, it was, they both were filling up at the same time or something, I don't know. Lo and behold, at the end of the day, it ended up being a city truck. And that the person told my friend that they didn't even need a new truck, whether all this is perfectly the way that he remembers it back in the day or not, I don't know, but, but that it was the end of the year and that there was a certain amount of budget left that council had appropriated and that he, that she said she didn't really need it, but that it, they said, well, you're getting one anyway, it's the end of the budget year, basically spending the money. So that was kind of my question, was whether or not this had, I understand on contracts for services and whatever, I just wondered if it applied to that too. And that doesn't necessarily mean that I'm not supporting it, I just wondered if that was.
Yeah, it's, it's purchases, contracts for supplies, equipment or services, so any of those things, as long as money's been appropriated, we would be able to go forward with those up to fifty thousand dollars. I passed.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Beerman.
So, I was not at this October meeting, but I did read the minutes and then I read the agenda item and, so that's why I'm a little surprised that it also says purchases, because from the minutes, it talks specifically about contracts and about the state's bidding, what, I can't remember exactly what it is, aligning it with the state as it relates to contracts. So, what, how much discussion was there at the October meeting about this? Because the minutes are fairly brief on that, but it does say city contracts at twenty-five thousand above or increase it to the state statute level. And so, I just, there was not a whole lot more there, it does say that there was an email sent, I tried to look for it, maybe I wasn't looking for the right keywords or what, but then I couldn't find the email. So, I am, I am a little concerned about purchases more than I am about contracts because the contracts, we've already approved the contracts and it would just be an increase in the contract for some.
It would be approval of the actual contract, up to fifty thousand would not come to council.
Okay.
The, the discussion at the Finance Committee, as I recall, was tying this in, in terms of amount to the Competitive Bidding Act. The state law does not have a requirement for when things have to be approved by council, that's solely set by city ordinance. The reason it includes supplies, equipment or contractual services is because it is an amendment to this section of the ordinance, which has always included all of those things and tied them into that, that one amount. I think it was probably framed as purchases just because that, that is what the section of the code is titled, but the actual language says the city council must approve all contracts for or purchases of supplies, equipment or contractual services where the valuation exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, fifty thousand would this change.
Okay, I mean, I, and I, I do understand that. I don't, I don't want to vote no on this, but I don't know that I necessarily feel confident in voting yes. Did this go to a study session or a conference session or anything?
The feedback at Finance Committee was to email it out to council and see if we got any feedback.
Did you get any feedback?
I got one email from Councilmember Carter who supported it.
Okay. I would prefer to table this rather than vote no on it, that's just my, that's just my opinion, I don't, otherwise, otherwise I'm probably going to vote no, because I don't, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable with this just based on the information that I have in front of me, which does not include that email yet, so that's where I'm sitting right now.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
I don't have a real problem with it either, but I think I wouldn't mind postponing this until Darrell is back and can maybe give a explanation himself about it. Not that I don't trust Sean to fill in in that role, but I think, you know, we hired Darrell recently and maybe hearing from him to all of us about this specifically might help. So, I wouldn't be opposed to setting this aside until the next meeting, I think he'll be back then, so.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
I would also feel more comfortable waiting and visiting about it just a little bit more, especially, maybe we do need to add some language to it that would make us feel more comfortable about the purchasing, especially, I mean, we're in such budget crunches till, I don't know how we can go back to our constituents and say that we just, a lot has changed since October. I don't know how that we can just go back and say that we were okay with, you don't even have to come to us for anything out of fifty grand. I mean, that's, but I, I agree with Councilmember Holman, I would like to discuss it with city manager Pyle because he can probably shed a lot of light on and maybe we can move forward at that point.
If we would like this to go to a study session, we would likely need to postpone it to the second meeting in March, not our very next meeting, just clarifying. Okay, then I will make a motion to postpone this item to a date certain of March twenty-fourth, I believe.
I will second that.
The motion on the floor is to postpone item forty-four until the date certain of the March twenty-fourth meeting. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to postpone till March the twenty-fourth passes unanimously.
Item forty-five, miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council, remarks should be directed to the council as a whole. And again, just please make sure you introduce yourself with your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Maya Cobb and I live in Norman, I don't know which ward.
And I'm Fave Dawson, I also live in Norman, I'm not sure which ward either.
So we're representing Norman North Environmental Club and we just had a couple like quick questions about like recycling and stuff that is happening.
Because we've been having like a few complications with that.
Yeah, so one of the issues that we're having is, so we pick up the recycling every week and we like bring it down to the curb, but there is no one is coming to pick it up. So we're confused on whether or not it's every week or every other week, because whenever we call like the recycling place, we can't really get a clear answer on if it's every week or every other week.
It is.
Just like Jason general.
It is every other week for residential, I assume it is the same for our schools.
Okay. And then the other question that we had is, if we are looking to get more bins for our school because we're like reaching the limits because we have so much recycling?
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. How do we go about getting more bins for our school?
Mr. Kaminski, would you please join us and quickly give them a quick answer in case some more of our students at home are watching?
Sure, we'd be happy to supply more bins to schools and we do pick up recycling every other week.
Where does one send a request for more bins?
You could send it in to me or you could send it in to our sanitation department. Our recycling is collected by a contractor, so we have to then relay that information and make sure they follow up.
Okay, and we can also give the, the school a call. My email is mayor@normanok.gov and I'd be happy to forward that on if, if that would be helpful as well.
We just, we have one more question. We're just wondering, like, how could we improve our like recycling here in like schools? Like?
Yeah, like from like an adult standpoint, like what would you guys do to like better promote like green resources in like our education?
So what we can do is we have a, an item on the executive agenda or executive session after here that we'll have to go discuss, but if you can stick around, this isn't actually a time for discussion, it's more for you just to, it's all right, we're very glad that you're here, just to kind of comment, but not really to discuss, because that would be a different kind of agenda item. But I assure you, everyone on this dais is very happy to see you and we appreciate your efforts. And are you guys registered to vote?
I am.
I can't until May.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll tell you right now, if you go to the Oklahoma voter portal and fill out your information on that website, it'll tell you all of your voting wards and districts and everything like that. Very helpful tool.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight and stick around.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comment, sir?
Something happens to me. I'm in here, come in focused and serious and then you all just break me down.
Introduce yourself, Mr. Dunn.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, Evan Dunn, fourteen hundred Garfield Avenue, Ward Seven. This is a twelve string, I am going to play it. And three minutes is, I don't think it's going to be enough time, Madam Mayor. Let's, let's get serious though. This story was in the paper a couple days ago. Ripped away, son slain at age twenty and dad shared the final memories of the hours before at Grey Owl Coffee. Some kid, he's got a hundred bucks in his pocket and he goes to meet somebody and next thing you know, there's this tiff and boom, gun goes off, kid gets killed for a hundred bucks and three lives are ruined, three families are ruined. And it gets in the paper, we hear about it. Why doesn't that affect us more? Why do we kind of retreat into satire and the different diversions to entertain each other? Do we just feel like we can't do anything? Because I feel that way sometimes. This is out of my hands, I'm not their parents, I wasn't a teacher, I didn't, I didn't grow up with them. How much value is in a life? All the birthday parties, all the, all the expenses, all the, all the clothes, all, it's in the millions, I bet. Each one of us is worth millions of dollars, there's been millions of dollars of investment. We're not even talking about love and connection and compassion and the cultivation that our parents and our friends have all bestowed upon us. How about some really easy chords? This is an E. That's an F sharp minor eleven. It sounds beautiful. Let's see if we can make a little song up or something. This is that it stood out to me as well, so it was nice to know that other humans are as torn apart about those young lives as, as I've been, I've been following it, so I feel you, Mr. Dunn, and thank you for sharing that with us tonight.
Are there any other public comment?
Amendment was ratified. So, I've got some very complex feelings about the intersection of all of these important moments. And though the Nineteenth Amendment barred states from denying voting rights based on gender, racism was rampant within the suffrage movement, particularly among the leaders who are now held to such high esteem. And women of color, along with their male counterparts, continued to be disenfranchised until Native people were granted citizenship in nineteen twenty-four and in nineteen sixty-five with the passage of the Voting Rights Act. And so, I think it's really interesting that these three really important moments in history that we're recognizing this month, next month and this whole year, it has a, it's, it's a, it's a really complex thing for me, I really struggle with how to address all of these things in an intersectional way, because adding insult to injury, when white suffragettes began to write their own history, they whitewashed it. And so, next month, I'm going to start working. And so next month, I'm going to start working on, through my Facebook page, whoever will listen to me at the grocery store, just in my daily life, amplifying the contributions of the lesser-known women suffragettes of color. Mary Church Terrell, Mary Ann Shad Carey, and Fanny Barrier Williams, just three names, but they are not the names that you hear when you think of women's suffrage. They are not the names you hear when you think of Women's History Month. And so those are the kinds of names that I am going to try and bend over backwards to start making more household. Because we have, as women, a really complex relationship with the other facets of who we are. Black women were asked to separate their blackness from their womanhood in the early nineteen hundreds. They were forced to march at the back of suffragette marches. And they were not given the opportunity to be a complete person when addressing those issues. So I really struggle, especially right now, with how to talk about all of those things, uh, coming from a white female perspective. And so I'm gonna work, I'm gonna work on that and I'm gonna try and put some of that out there so that hopefully other people can work on it, because I think it's really important as white women that we make room for those voices and to amplify them where we can. Because whether we think we do or not, we do have a platform, and so we need to use it better than we have in the past. So that's what I'm thinking about tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
Following up Kate is always the hardest thing ever because I'm like, why did I not think about putting together a TED Talk like Kate does that are always inspiring and I just, anyway, I'm gonna talk about. Yeah.
It's all downhill from here.
Maybe, yeah. So we have a public informational meeting that's gonna be happening in Ward Three. In an open house on Monday, March twenty-third, from six to eight at North Haven Church, and I imagine Ward Eight will be there as well. They're not Ward Three and Ward Eight meetings. They are, uh, project-specific meetings. So the Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest Widening Project from Tecumseh Road to Indian Hills Road. So if you have some public input that you would like to come and, or see the presentation, please come to the presentation. And then I, um, was encouraged, um, and I found today's Norman Forward, um, presentation, I, I thought it was meaty. I guess I'll put it that way. I mean, it's obvious that we have a lot of work in front of us to make sure that, um, we can right-side Norman Forward, but also, um, come out on the other side of this where the, to instill some trust with the voters. But getting there is not free. Imagine that. So we're gonna have to figure out how to do that in a fiscally responsible manner. And so Norman Forward isn't the only, um, capital projects that we are underfunded. Um, we, the municipal complex, um, PSST and bridges, um, we have a lot. So I look forward to, um, you know, having those conversations and prioritizing what we need to do to, uh, hold true to what we said we would do for the voters. And, um, as well as making sure that public health, public safety, um, are always, um, in the forefront of our minds, so, um. Yeah, I think it's been a good meeting and I, um, I'm sure that the HUD question earlier is going to continue to be something that we think about, and this job isn't always, um, the easiest, but it's why we make the big bucks up here. So that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall.
So I wasn't planning on commenting on this publicly, but I want to say thank you to Evan for taking the moment to recognize that a tragedy did occur in our community. And three lives were ruined. One was tragically lost because of gun violence, and it's really personal with me because, um, the victim was Walker Daniel Pitchlin. And I remember the day that this young man came into the Pitchlin home. I've known this family for forty years. And, uh, he was loved by his birth family who could not care for him and lovingly allowed the Pitchlin family to take Walker into their home. So it was a gift of love given to this young man from both families, and he had a beautiful life and was loved by his family and his friends and his community. And, uh, it's, uh, really, really tragic, and I know the family really appreciates the outpouring of care and concern that, um, they've shown, been shown by our caring community. So thank you for taking the time to recognize Walker Daniel Pitchlin. Um, I'm gonna go in reverse chronological order on all of the excitement that's happening in Ward Four. On, um, Saturday, March seventh, um, we're going to have a Ward Four meeting, and, um, the topic of the meeting, although we'll cover other things, will be to have a presentation on our census and how important it is to our community for everybody to participate in the census. So, um, I hope to see as many, uh, Ward Four constituents and anybody else that would like to attend the Ward Four meeting. You're always welcome. And it will be from ten to eleven-thirty on, oh, I'm sorry, we've changed it. It's gonna be ten-thirty to, uh, yeah, ten-thirty to noon at the Norman Central Library in the Red Bud Room, which is located up on the third floor. On Sunday, March first, from seven to nine PM, the Depot is, um, offering a free pop-up concert, um, of flute and guitar duo, the Nucleo Okra, featuring Larry Hammett and Miranda Arana, along with an art exhibit by Miranda's father, J. Arnold. And this coming Friday, February twenty-eighth, at seven PM at Midway Deli, uh, the League of Women Voters is celebrating the twenty-twenty centennial of the women's right to vote. And, um, I hope that you all can come and help mark this important milestone. Which brings me to, two weeks ago tonight, um, we had a municipal election to elect our, um, Wards Two, Four, and Six council members. One is still undecided, but, um, in a runoff that will happen in April, but, um, I was really, um, very happy to see all of the people who chose to participate in the election come out. But when you look at the bigger picture, um, when you combine Wards Two, Four, and Six, out of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-nine registered voters, three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight chose to participate in the election. That's about twelve percent of eligible registered voters that, um, participated and chose your elected representatives, which means that eighty-seven point nine percent chose to sit it out. Municipal elections are notorious for having the lowest voter turnout, when, um, I would suggest this is where you can make your vote count the most. So, um, I've been thinking a lot about that because your voice is your vote, and voting is a way to express yourself and to, um, uh, use the power of your vote and your voice to, um, have a say in who is going to represent you. So, um, we had eight candidates that probably collectively knocked on thousands of doors. We had, uh, League of Women Voter, Voters in the Chamber of Commerce, both hosted candidate forums. Tiners Cornbread and Beans held three different events for candidates to participate that were Ward-specific. We had City of Norman Employees Union. In my case, invite both Ward Four candidates to, uh, participate and communicate with employees at their meeting. I know there have been various Ward Six specific events, um, that were held so that candidates could connect with voters. Voters had mailboxes filled with mailers. The transcript provided candidate profiles and reported on the Ward races and the election. Social media provided another opportunity to interact with candidates and, um, also on Ward pages. There were kickoff events, neighborhood events, fundraisers. These are all the things that I think are predictable and are expected by voters in our community and candidates who are willing to invest the time to try to connect. And so I, um, think that we clearly need to take a hard look at our playbook as we're currently executing it and ask ourselves why, as a community as a whole, um, eighty-five to ninety percent of our voters choose to not use their voice and their power to vote. So I'm really curious to hear from any or all of you. Um, I think we may talk about this a little bit at our Ward Four meeting, but I'm just wondering how we can change that narrative and how we can encourage people, um, to use their voice and to be motivated to go vote for municipal elections where they really can make a difference. So that's what's on my mind.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
Okay, so, wow, there's a lot happened tonight. Um, A, these girls came to this meeting, spent their time. These are not the most exciting meetings. I understand this. Um, however, I think, uh, Councilmember Hall actually touched on a really good way that you can affect your, your community and your environment, and that's vote. Because what we did here tonight was, uh, protect our environment when we voted to not increase our density in our green space. I know that seems, there's a lot of terms going around, but we basically said, "Let's not push the city out away from the core where our infrastructure is and build out over all of this green space. Instead, let's go ahead and hold those, those policies that we've put in place to protect our environment." That we, we held true to that, even though that was a very compelling argument, you know, from that person. So I would say being participative in your, participative, in your local, um, government is important. And I love that there's an environmental club at Norman North. I had no idea. My kids did not invol, get involved in that, but I, uh, I would have encouraged them, so good job on that. And I, I'm gonna give a, I know we're not supposed to, this is not the agenda, but it's my miscellaneous comments, I'm gonna talk about what I want. Uh, I'm gonna give you a pointer. Reduce is part of that. Reduce, reuse, recycle. Reducing, I think, is going to be the key for us as a, as a globe, as an earth. Reduce. You can't always depend on taking your plastic and your glass and your stuff someplace to be that's not at your house anymore. So maybe you guys could start an initiative at the high schools, because if we can get our young people involved in this, then we're really gonna make some differences. So let's reduce as well as recycle, but also reuse. Um, there's some really great items at Habitat for Humanity Restore to, uh, reuse, and they do some fun things over there. So, um, thank you, girls, for being here tonight, um, young women, I'm sorry. Um, and on Ward Five specific, uh, this Thursday at our Community Planning and Transportation Not to Steal, uh, Councilmember Holman's thunder or anything, but we will be having a very important conversation about rural roads, uh, stop signs. If you out there in Ward Five have gone to Walmart down Cedar Lane, uh, and Thirty-Sixth and, um, through that intersection and prayed every time you went through and slowed down and flashed your lights and honked your horn and maybe second thought it and maybe went to Post Oak instead, um, then that's something we need to talk about, how we can make those, those places safer for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scanlon.
Evan, I appreciate your comments about the young man. It, it really brings things home to us. You're right, we don't think about it often enough. But as I was thinking about it, I was also thinking about tragedies averted and, and, uh, the role that first responders play in that. And I can think of three instances within the last week where I've gotten a, a text message from the city manager talking about a fire, uh, where damage was limited, no injuries, that kind of thing. We owe a lot to our first responders. We truly do. Uh, you can see I'm wearing a costume tonight. This is a, I think it's a very warm jacket and I like it a lot, and by the way, I paid for it, lest there be any doubt. But I wear it proudly because of the activities that our first responders engage in. I really am thankful for them. Warming shelter. We've been running a warming shelter since early December. It will close on Sunday. It, uh, we've seen just under two hundred faces, individual faces, over the period of these months. Over half were new to the system in that we didn't know who they were. We didn't know what services they needed, and they didn't know what services we had, uh, to provide that might help them get out of the cycle of homelessness. Help them to find a job, help them to find credentials that will be to their benefit. Uh, it's really been a, a heartwarming experience for me to visit there from time to time and to talk to these people. Uh, one of the things we have done and, and council will see it, uh, writ large, when Michelle Evans, who is our, uh, uh, planning person, person in charge of, of homeless issues, uh, and, and Lisa Craig, we're gonna give a formal report on, on homeless issues and our point-in-time, uh, count that was done in January. We cut a video a week ago of Michelle interviewing several homeless individuals, and it, I happened to be there and watched it being recorded. It is quite something to see. People not feeling sorry for themselves, but rather just explaining how they got there, explaining what their plans were, uh, and, and, uh, voicing some appreciation for the good work that, uh, Michelle and Lisa and, and other volunteers from the Continuum of Care have, have done. So first responders, uh, our work with the homeless, a couple of positive things about the city of Norman and the good things that we're doing. So I appreciate all of that. Uh, there will be a Ward Six meeting sometime in mid-March. We're gonna talk about the census like everybody else. Very, very important thing. The census, I think, starts on the twelfth of March and runs till the end of April. It is vitally important that people step up and, and be counted, quite literally, in, in that endeavor. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Just echo some of the other comments of my colleagues, um, and just, uh, send my thoughts to the Pitchlin family. I, I know them as well, and, um, I can't imagine what they're going through right now. Homicide in Norman is not a common occurrence. We have a hundred and twenty-five thousand people that live in this city, but the homicide rate and the crime rate in Norman is actually significantly lower than cities of similar size throughout the nation. We're very fortunate for that. I think it, though, means that when it does happen, it maybe has a more, more, a bigger impact because it doesn't happen very often and, uh, can impact a lot of us, so, uh, my thoughts are with their families tonight. A few other things. Uh, Super Tuesday is coming up. Um, Cleveland County voters will have a chance to vote on whether alcohol sales should be allowed on Sundays or not. I think three counties, Oklahoma, Tulsa, and Cleveland County are voting on that on Super Tuesday, uh, from what I understand. And don't know who everybody's picking for their primary pick. Uh, I might be a little undecided right now, but I'll keep thinking about it. I'm an independent, so. I'll also be having a Ward Seven meeting sometime in mid-March. Um, I'm, my last two Ward Seven meetings were at Reeves Park, so the next one will probably be at Cobblestone Creek Clubhouse. Um, I might have another one at the beginning of April at Reeves Park, one or the other, um, so we can kind of get everybody and talk about the census. I might, I'll probably do one at Reeves Park anyway, just because it's close to campus and, um, OU students are one of the big groups that we're trying to make sure we get counted in the census. Um, high school students would be another big group of residents that we need to make sure that are, are counted. I recall, uh, when I was at the Capitol at the mayor's congress, that it was something like eighteen hundred dollars per person. Is what the census accounted for in federal funding per year, I think it was, so. Yeah, okay, sixteen, that, per person, per year. So over a span of ten years, every ten years is when the census is done. It literally can mean millions of dollars, and for a city of Norman, it can mean tens of millions of dollars in federal funding for transit, for road improvement projects, all sorts of infrastructure issues that we really, uh, need to make sure everybody's counted. So I'll be having one Ward Seven meeting for sure, probably two, I would, I would expect over the next two months to discuss that, Norman Forward and other issues going on. In addition to that, CPT, as Councilmember Wilson mentioned, on Thursday, will be discussing, uh, transit ridership as we do every month. Uh, we talk about ridership numbers. We talk about, uh, what's been going on since we took over the system, what issues we're facing right now, what we, uh, plan to do about it. So anybody that's interested in the public transit system, uh, is welcome to attend the CPT meeting on Thursday at four o'clock here at City Hall. Uh, we'll be talking about rural road striping and stop signs, and we'll be talking about a, uh, we'll have a presentation from a group of Norman residents for a Norman Fruit Tree Initiative, so that should be pretty interesting as well. Comes to recycling, the other term I would add is refuse. I don't know if that made in there. Refuse is the first one, so when the, when the server at the restaurant, uh, sets down a straw, tell him, "I don't, no thanks, I don't need one." You know, refuse.
And plastic bags.
Plastic bags. Refuse the bag if you can. Refuse straws. Refuse it and then reduce. Plastic bags, refuse the bag if you can, refuse straws, refuse it and then reduce it, and then we can recycle it maybe. But we really do have to reduce and refuse stuff. In some cities and some places, they rely on the government to make a policy that says you can't have bags, and we have attempted to do stuff, we can't. So, really, though, I would prefer, instead of me having to make a policy here that forces you to do the right thing, that everybody just make the choice to do the right thing and and refuse those items when 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 possible. That's really the biggest help. And I would say it's wonderful to hear that the recycling bins at Norman North are overflowing. I wonder if Norman High has a club too, an environmental club? I would expect them to. I went there. Okay. Okay, well, we need to find out. Maybe we can get another competition going there. But I would also encourage you that, you know, any of us, you can find us on the city's website. You can email or call. All of our cell phone numbers are on the website. If you have any questions like that or about what to do, you can contact any of us, and we can get with the city staff and and get some answers usually. So, that is one of the best ways. And then, yeah, voting in local elections, that'd be the last topic I have to talk about. But as I mentioned, a city of one hundred and twenty-five thousand people, each ward has somewhere around fifteen thousand people. And for me, as an example, I when I first ran for city council, I lost by twenty-one votes. When I sec the second time I ran for city council, I won by twenty-eight votes. So, in the third largest city in the state of Oklahoma, in a ward where I represent fifteen thousand people, which is three times more people than live in the town of Noble, I was elected by a very few number of people. And and you're absolutely right, too, that the overall number of voters that turn out for these elections is very low, and it's where their vote really has the most impact. And it is a real mystery. I know cities all across the country are trying to figure out, why why won't people? Why why eighty-seven percent of people not voting in this local election and electing their city council member? It makes no sense. It's so easy to go. It's not necessarily easy to understand the issues, but it's physical act, I think, of going to voting is pretty easy. So, anyway, thank you all for being here tonight. We'll see you next time.
Thank you. As always, thank you to our staff and my fellow counselors. Appreciate y'all being here. And these ladies, thank you for coming tonight. I see some younger faces today. It's very nice. The youngest person in the room sometimes, which is an interesting feeling. So, thank you so much for what you're doing. Animal issues and environmentalism is what really got me on my path into this realm, the political realm, and I think that's also where it stems, is just seeing injustices being done around us, whether it's to animals or our friends, our family, other people, to our environment, to our mother earth. So, it's all pretty awesome that you guys are doing that. Keep up the good work. Get involved with campaigns, too. Voting is so critical, as we've already discussed. And also, thank you, Evan, for your lovely song, Even in Your Sadness. You bring us you touch our hearts. Thank you. Anyway, so get involved with campaigns and because it takes work. And I think that a big problem is that politics is not sexy, and it turns people off in a way because they don't feel like they are being heard or they don't have a voice. There's a lot of voter apathy. I was knocking doors just this past weekend, talking to people about voting, and one they aren't even sure, you know, if I'm on the ballot on March third, and we don't really talk about the fact that filing is not till April, I'm running for state senate. So, that's why it's a different thing I do. I was not reelected last week because I didn't run. So, more power to my successor. So, but yeah, people, I think there's a lot of voter apathy. I was at the doors, and they say we vote on stuff all of the time. Why we we're constantly voting. I have to keep up with this. I have to keep up with that. So, consolidating our voting and making it really and publicizing it. I was fortunate in Ward Eight when I ran in twenty eighteen and won by fifty-eight percent on my birthday, which was beautiful. We had about fourteen percent turnout, actually. So, yes, Ward Eight. And that's and it was because there was a lot of momentum at the time, too. There was a lot of momentum, a lot of people running. I'm pretty sure Councilmember Bierman and Wilson were running in twenty seventeen, and there was a ton of momentum at that time. People were paying attention because things are happening and we are not liking what we're seeing. And the thing is, is it's kind of losing momentum now. Even though we're in twenty twenty and we know this is a huge year, it's so critical that we continue that momentum. There's also so much going on, and there's a lot of the reason I think politics turns people off so much is because we see a lot of theater. We see a lot of things happening that aren't, these are not things we should be talking about. There are really few things that we need to be talking about. One of them, the biggest one is the environment, obviously. And I'm a really big fan of taxes. I love talking about taxes. I watch people's eyes glaze over all day. As soon as I start talking about income tax and income tax reform, I just love it. I would like to figure out a better way to maybe sell these ideas to people. But so I'm maybe guilty a little bit of creating some apathy. So, sorry about that. But looking at taxes, it's pretty like super whack in Oklahoma. Anyway, really, really big thing. So, census, we'll have a Ward Eight meeting at the end of March, the last Sunday in March. And so, we'll talk about census stuff then, as well as I'd like to do another. It's about that time of year where we do our Sutton Wilderness cleanup. Last year, before Mayor Clark was Mayor Clark, she was Councilmember Clark for Ward Six. And so, they butt up. If you would like to co-host, Councilmember Scanlon and Mayor Clark, since you do, you know, live right there as well, down down the street from me now. So, would like to host a cleanup again and make sure that we are picking up trash. And so, I was actually out at Sutton today. There's a neighborhood in Ward Eight that butts up right next to it. And so, I was walking through there, and there was a small homeless encampment, just a tent, somebody minding their business right there. And there was a seventy-two hour notice to vacate, and it came from the city. And I have a I have explicit feelings about homelessness because of how it has affected my own family and also how I feel about public space. I believe that public space and open space, you have the right to the space that you occupy and that sometimes these laws violate our rights to occupy that space. And so, as Sutton Wilderness is, although it's wilderness, it is public. And I believe that people should be allowed to occupy those spaces without being told to vacate. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Henry Lefbrev, but he's a political theorist, and he talks about right to the city. And if you are in a city and you are contributing to the city or if you are, you know, occupying space in the city, you have a right to that space and to vocalize, you know, your voice here in front of us as well. So, that's how I feel about that. I appreciate my peers' work on the homeless committee or the action. What is it?
It's a long name.
Ad hoc, thank you so much. So, the homeless ad hoc committee, they are doing work. And we, again, we have a lot of empty apartments and housing. There's enough, there is enough shelter for everyone. Everyone is entitled to food, water, and shelter. And so, I'm interested to see how we can go about tackling this issue of homelessness. I saw an article from another city where investors came in and they made it so that people could move in. Homeless people moved in, and they make a home and a life for themselves in this area, in this space. And this is uplifting communities that are otherwise obviously suffering that we talk about a lot, you know. And then, so lastly, and back to the sort of the glossy stuff that I saw yesterday, that there was the decision about the petition initiative was was basically tossed that said that the petition was pretty much invalid. As we know, it sort of froze up our funds and our budget. And personally, as somebody who comes who loves to look at taxes and budgets and things like that, and how I feel like I've been personally very much suffering, thinking that we're gonna have to make all of these cuts and that we're going into this next fiscal year, looking at pretty severe cuts to our services. And from a customer service standpoint, that's the opposite thing of what you want to do because it does a disservice not only to our staff, but it also does a disservice to our citizens and our constituents. So, I'm pretty optimistic now that we'll be okay. And I feel really, really grateful for that. So, that's all I've got. Thank you. Have a.
Thank you, Councilmember. I've got some of my announcements were already covered. The event at Midway Deli for the hundredth anniversary celebration of women's suffrage. Don't miss that. Seven P M. I think Susan Herndon will be the live music and speaker. I also wanted to encourage everyone to vote. And just a reminder, many of our independent voters don't realize that you can vote in the primary, but the Democrat primary only, and that's set by the state party. But Republicans, you have a primary as well, as well as the county initiative. So, get out and vote. Early voting is Thursday and Friday. Excuse me? That's what I said. Not in Republicans, but Republicans have a primary. That's all right. But early voting is at the Cleveland County Election Board on Robinson. I believe it's eight to six P M. Thursday and Friday. So, telling me you're busy on Tuesday is not going to be an excuse. And then finally, I want to make sure you Norman residents, age twenty-one to forty, are aware of a fun annual event called Live, Work, Play by Norman Next. It'll be from six to nine P M. at the Mercury, and they have great giveaways. It's a live music. It's a fun event, a great way to highlight Norman and learn more about Norman Next, our young professionals' organization. With that, thank you all, colleagues, for your thoughtful comments tonight. I appreciate your service to our community. Item forty-six, adjourning into an executive session authorized by Oklahoma Statute's Title Twenty-Five, Section three oh seven B three to discuss the acquisition of real property between Creston Way and Schultz Drive for stormwater drainage purposes and the acquisition of real property located on Porter Avenue near and surrounding its intersection with Acre Street and Daw Street for the Porter Acres Intersection Project. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session.
So moved. Second. The motion on the floor is to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have to adjourn out of a council meeting and convene in executive session. Pass as unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmembers, you may move to the study session room.